Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, to the nation, underground, individual, liberty, justice, and law.
Okay. Lori, would you please call a roll?
Hetske.
Hetske here.
Bastian.
Bastian here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Weiser.
Weiser here.
Dubruck.
Dubruck here.
Gray here.
All right. Just like to welcome everybody in person and watching from all over the place, including Albany, New York, I guess. Thanks for watching. We're way more entertaining than the zoning board, just putting that out there. And we don't have minutes for the last meeting, so why don't we move right into our agenda and tabled applications?
All right. So we have the applicant in the audience for item two, so let's start with item two. 1492 Sweets Corners Road. So since our last meeting, they did go back to the zoning board. The zoning board denied the variance for lot size smaller than a, or an accessory structure larger than allowed by code. They have since redrawn the map. It is now a zoning compliant lot at five acres. It more than meets what is required for an accessory structure the size that is on the property.
Okay. This is mine.
So staff has drafted an approval, draft approval resolution for your review.
Yep. I, anybody have any issues with this at this point?
No.
Do we need to do the EAF?
We did the EAF back in August.
All right. I will move to approve the resolution and approve the subdivision.
I'll second.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton. Oh, okay. I have to send. Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Good luck.
All right. Application number one, 1801 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, known as a pathstone mixed-use development. Since our last meeting, we have been in contact with the engineering firm. They are currently working on revisions based on the conversation the board had at our last meeting on the ninth, including comments from the DOT, board comments, and a PRC memo that was issued on August 30th. We have not received revised plans at this time. Hoping to keep the conversation going, I want to see if the staff, if the board was comfortable with the pedestrian spine. Since we're waiting on architectural improvements and a possible layout change, we don't foresee the spine being part of that layout change required by the DOT. So I wanted to see if you guys were comfortable with the spine as it's designed, the amenities around it.
Well, it looks, is that the same or is that different?
Yes, their 3D color rendering is a, a older revision from the plan set that we have. The plan set that we, has does include extending the 16-foot wide pedestrian access from Penfield Square all the way to the north. It does meander, so it's not just a straight line with pockets, side pockets that will have benches, pedestrian scale lighting and ballards.
So, I don't know how everybody else feels about this, but I definitely would be seeking input on this. We're, this is our third application for the mixed-use district that's official. The third one that's in Zone A. Zone A is our most intensive district or zone in terms of uses and commercial uses. And we don't have that many more chances to make this the region, district that we really want to see. And so I don't know how everybody feels about the architecture and the buildings and if it's enough to get the feel, and you may not even agree with me in that, I'm, my, I envision this whole district being kind of like a downtown village, like, you know, a little city center. And I, I would like to see as much of the Zone A parcels reflect that, because if we don't do that now, we're not going to be able to do that in Zone B or C. And I really want to get everybody's views on that.
Yeah, Zone A is intended to be the most heavily commercial of, or multi-use of all the, or mixed use of all the zones. Zone B is primarily high-density residential. Zone C is essentially equivalent to our RR1 zoning district or one acre per dwelling unit density.
Yeah.
That has been a concern. It is something staff has brought up with the applicant and included in each of our PRC memos was ideas and suggestions for areas for additional commercial, like along the pedestrian spine where it could support something like a cafe or some use that is very pedestrian acceptable, or along the frontage by 250 where it would have the higher visibility of the traffic that, that's heading north and south on 250.
So I don't know if anybody wants to comment. I'd kind of like, like to, Billy, why go first?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, is try to incorporate that pedestrian spine along with some of the commercial uses that would fit something like that.
Yeah, it's got to be that non-casual work session. It's a very stiff, just remember that.
Right.
Formal.
Yeah, the pedestrian spine should incorporate some of the commercial aspects. Cafes are a good example, coffee shops, outdoor seating, things like that. I don't know if that does it or not. It's hard to envision that with looking at that drawing there.
I know I sat in a PRC meeting last week and brought this up with the applicant. And, you know, I think some of the, the first floor uses of the two buildings are, I think they're going to go back and try to make them seem like more of a streetscape, like a commercial type streetscape. At least that was the, maybe it was my takeaway wannabe, but I think that they, they definitely were listening and taking notes, and I think they understood where, at least I was coming from. And again, I'm just one out of five, so I don't want to have my opinion roughshod over everybody else's.
Well, I, I think of a few years back, I was in Fort Collins, Colorado, and they've closed off a section of Old Town, and they made it pedestrian-friendly. And a lot of the restaurants and the storefronts, they, they were open-air. We, you know, you could just walk in, and obviously you can't do that in February here.
Right.
But for, you know, four or five months out of the year, you could do that here. And it was, it was nice. It was really pleasant to walk around there. They, they had outdoor seating, they had bars and cafes and everything, and it was, it was very friendly for the pedestrians.
So when you say open-air, I mean, I've been to places where there's like big glass garage doors, like overhead doors that they kind of roll up and it becomes like an indoor-outdoor kind of deal?
Roll up or like in Hawaii where they roll to the side, they slide to the side. Yeah, that's, that's what it was like. New York City has some like that and around Times Square, and it's just a nice open feel. It brings people out.
Yeah. Actually, there's a few restaurants in Hong Kong that I go to that are like that, too, but it's way warmer there than here.
Yeah.
Did PRC bring up any issues with me?
Um, I, I guess a few.
I mean, our, yeah, so we, we did reiterate some of the comments that we had made previously, like some of the suggestions on where we believe they could, they could better utilize additional commercial. We did go through a little more thoroughly, some of the comments, architectural comments that we had received back from the consultant, and tried to talk through some of the architectural choices they made, you know, the colors that they did, a bit of the building scape, you know, the, you know, where we thought they had made progress in terms of how, how it looks, that they, they are using multiple colors, that the colors are very earth toned and reminiscent of, you know, a historical palette that would have been more traditional in turn-of-the-century architecture, you know, in, in the Northeast, but also balancing, you know, some of the modern aspects that comes along with this type of development. We discussed some of the parking concerns and where they've made some inroads in breaking up the parking from the one large parking lot, and talked through some very basic, if they did have to move the road, per the comments from the DOT, to have some additional separation from Sweets Corners Road, how that might affect the parking layout. And then part of it was just discussing through what they see in their residential uses.
I see they mentioned daycare centers that something they have a commitment.
I think so.
Already they have a commitment on daycare center. They mentioned another commercial, it's possibly for that, because I know the south of, that project from down, south of there was having a lot of problems trying to get, you know, commercial people, you know?
So the daycare is definitely their largest commercial tenant. It's going to be about 9,000 square feet of the building, and then additionally, they have their own dedicated playground on the exterior, which will be near the other passive recreational areas that they're showing that would be more for the public and for the public and the residents. They still do have the 4,000-square-foot retail out parcel. They have indicated that they have been in some early discussions with the tenant. They did not name the tenant just because it was relatively preliminary. In addition, they do have a small nonprofit office user who will be occupying a portion of the first floor.
So we've got two, two definite tenants, one fish on the line, maybe more, but.
As far as the, the open space and making that feel, like you mentioned there, now the project south of that also tried that recently. I did not make that. They had a little concert or something, and I'm not aware of how that went, but I don't know if anybody here attended it or?
Yeah, I was there. Yeah.
How was it?
It was nice. They had some not-for-profit organizations, color Penfield Green was there, that one music place, what is it, Rock to Bach, had a tent set up.
Oh, yeah, Bach to Rock or whatever the, the school.
Yeah. So they had music there with kids playing. There were some food trucks there, and it really, it utilized that space pretty nicely, I would say, you know, as, as was intended. And I think, I'm trying to remember who put that on. Was that the chamber?
Oh, I do think, I believe it was Episcopal Senior Life was leading it, or Home Leasing was leading it, but I, I do believe they partnered with the business, the Penfield Business Chamber to set it up. I know Bach to Rock is one of their members. So I, I believe it was a collaborative effort.
Yeah, on this project, I think what, what we would like to see, what I would like to see, too, when those changes are incorporated, is again, renditions of street views, sidewalk views, so we can kind of envision maybe at a couple of vantage points along there, looking in both directions, I guess, in kind of the courtyard areas and then through that corridor, what it would look like. As a, you know, as a rendition.
Yeah, you mean, almost like, yeah, isometric view or something that?
Yeah, yeah, like some of the others have provided.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's something we, certainly something we can ask for, and we can include in a tabling resolution.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
For the pedestrian corridor, I wonder, and I've seen this before, I'm trying to think where it was, where if I look at this, I see a sidewalk meandering with grass on each side. It's very defined, people stay on the sidewalk. I've seen it where it's more blended, where you really, okay, the sidewalk, you know where you're supposed to walk, but there's hardscape around it, it's not all grass. And that, that's a little more user-friendly, I guess, for pedestrians. Then there were benches, and I wish I could remember where it was.
I, I think that's a good idea. I don't know how that affects green space and all that kind of stuff, but I think that would be something that we should look at seriously. I mean, I like that idea, personally, I like that idea enough that if there's a, you know, hard and fast green space rule, then we ought to look at getting that changed, if they go below it because of something like that. Because that's an amenity that more than offsets.
I believe the green space is a soft requirement under Table 6.15.
I think it is, too.
I believe it's a recommend, a recommendation of 20%. I have to verify.
Yeah, I think that's.
If I have the codebook in front of me.
Did, did we have our landscape architect weigh in on this? I can't remember.
Yes, Bruce, we did send it off to Bruce Saretsky. He did provide back a memo.
Okay.
He had some very small comments on, mostly on using different species of?
Or the plant selection.
Plants that were, yeah, it was, it was, it was all around plant selection. I believe he, he recommended some hardier plants in a couple of locations.
Okay.
So you'd be interested in a wider pedestrian spine or one that incorporates more hardscape?
More hardscape, maybe here and there, throw a firebin in. They're unpopular, people will gather around those. I know they're expensive, you have to run gas out there and everything, but where I've been, the people do use them.
So they do show, and it's, I know it's hard to see on the screens, but there's little half arcs coming off of it that'll be, those will have some benches. I believe there might be, is there a, do we have a plan that shows, I believe we have a plan that might show that in a little bit more detail? But they'll, they'll include, they'll include benches and some pedestrian scale lighting just as, as areas where you could take a break while you're on the spine.
Okay. What's everybody else's opinion on the, you know, they may be coming back with some alterations to the buildings, but, you know, for the buildings themselves, I, I don't have an issue with the way they design them. The, the issue, I guess, that I have in, it's along the same lines as a, sort of across the street. I really, I don't want to, in the future, see a bunch of apartment buildings that are, or, obviously apartment buildings or what looks like a hotel or something like, I just, I want it to look like a village. And I'm hoping that they can, even if it's still just two buildings, hoping that they can kind of make that happen.
So would the board be interested in seeing something where it's, you know, three or four buildings that are maybe a reduced building height that are stylized a little differently, whether it's something to look like a brownstone, even if it is still a part, truly an apartment building, but that just has a look on the exterior that doesn't look as traditionally like an apartment building?
The height doesn't bother me at all. The, you know, I think that the 20%, especially in Zone A, the 20% commercial shouldn't really be considered the ceiling, it should be the floor. And all three of these projects have come in with less than the 20%. And, well, we're getting close to the 20%. You know, we're closer than the other guys or something like that, but it really, you know, wouldn't it be cool if it was 50%? You know, because the rest of the whole district is going to be Zone B and C, which is pretty much all residential. And, and I get the fact that, you know, we're in a challenging environment for commercial space rentals, and nobody wants to speculate and things like that, but should we be setting aside building footprints or space so that, hey, when, you know, maybe it's 10 years down the road, that right now there's a big demand for commercial structures there, commercial applications, and they build them then? Or is it sufficient to have the commercial, say, on the first floor and maybe some on the second floor or something? You know, I, I don't know if I have the answer. I, I know I can ask you questions.
When do you think they'll be back with the revisions?
By, I'm hoping by the next meeting. I just know there, there was, they had, between the board, the PRC, and the DOT, they had quite a few comments and decisions to make on revisions. So I know they're working hard on that.
All right. Anything else from you guys?
Yeah, just one, one more thing with, with the commercial area. I know it was mentioned that there was possibly, I guess, a not-for-profit user in one section. And I guess, you know, if a certain space was identified, those uses could be, over time, maybe, you know, flexible for a couple of given years, maybe it's an office space. And then down the road, as things change, maybe somebody puts in a cafe, it gets rebuilt out.
Right.
So it's more like an identified commercial footprint that maybe could change or its type of use could change over time.
That certainly could be something we ask them is to, and I know we've, we've discussed with other mixed-use applicants, was ensuring that some portions of the property that are proposed to be residential are designed in such a way that they could support a transition to commercial in the future, whether that is, you know, a higher ceiling height or, you know, HVAC support, something like that, that if in 10 years, you know, the apartments they have on the first floor, they think they could do better with commercial tenants, that they could be more easily converted over into a commercial space when the time comes. So asking them to, to take that into consideration in the design and construction of the building is, you know, the potential for future, future transition.
Yeah, that's even, you know, even one more step, you know, from doing just the housing portion of it or flex to commercial.
Right. Bill, any final thoughts?
Um.
For tonight?
Not.
Final, final?
Not for tonight.
Okay. Anything else from you, Doug, or Mike?
Just to summarize, what you guys are looking for in a tabling resolution is, you know, asking them to provide some sort of streetscape or pedestrian level renderings that could give a better feel of what the open space in the spine would look like, you know, considering to incorporate a wider pedestrian spine, whether it's sort of like a pedestrian boulevard or a walkable boulevard, or additional amenities along the pedestrian spine, fire pits, et cetera. Working to identify other areas on the site that could support commercial to get them closer or exceed the 20% that is a requirement in the mixed-use development district, Zone A.
Yeah, Zone A.
So sort of those, those three big items, we can include in a tabling resolution?
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Somebody want to?
Move to table?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Application number three, 2745 Penfield Road, Highland Estates. It's a 17-lot subdivision on Penfield Road across from Jamondo Way. Staff issued a PRC memo on September 7th, right before our last meeting. They are still working on revisions for that, so we're expecting those relatively soon in time for your next meeting. We have been in discussion with them, if you remember from our last meeting. It is a Type 1 action because it is adjacent to nationally-registered historic property, and it exceeds certain limits within an agricultural district. We have been in discussion with the applicant. The board did send out lead agency letters. We heard back from SHPO, who has no concern with the historic structure to the west. They don't foresee an impact, but they did ask for an archaeological survey. The applicant has stated that they will be, they have been in discussion, and one of the ways they can fulfill that requirement is to essentially have a farmer till the field, you know, by disturbing the top layers of soil. They can look for anything that could be indicative of, you know, historic value. If they find none, they can submit that, and should be able to meet SHPO's requirement on that. So we're, we are waiting on that and awaiting their, their report back to us that we can provide to SHPO, so that the board could hopefully declare lead agency for the environmental review.
Is there a timeline when they're going to do that?
It, it should be actively ongoing, because they did let us know that if any residents called, that they're not starting construction. They're, they're very specifically just tilling the field.
Okay.
For the property.
So we could continue tabling that, awaiting?
Continue table, or in the past, we've done no action, because there's no real updates on it or any, nothing for the board to review.
What'd they come up with on the pond on the property? What happened with their pond? That, was that the, they put the pond on the neighbor's property?
Yeah, where they're still working through easements. So they're, they're going, they are proposing an easement with the neighbor to allow for the work to occur to remove the pond from the neighboring property, or if the property owner is okay with it, leaving the pond and just having it under an easement that makes the responsibility of the homeowner.
Any other zoning issues?
Um, no. They had one house that did not meet setback. They said, they, they caught that, and they're going to move that as part of it. All the lots are compliant with the two-acre zoning district, so there was no significant issues on that end.
Okay. All right. Somebody want to, should we table it or should we just no action? What do you think, Peter?
You can, you can no action. That's kind of how you've done it in the past.
Okay.
I mean, you could do it the other way, too.
All right. Moving on?
Okay. Okay, so taking no action. So we do have one action item, 1357 Jackson Road, the AE Hudeman subdivision. That was before the board backed in, I believe it was April to June. I believe we approved, the board approved it on our, at our June work session. Yeah, it is on the northwest corner of Plank and Jackson. Yep, it was the four-lot subdivision. The board approved it as a town law 278 subdivision. Lot 1 is only half an acre, but it is in keeping with the existing residential development around it. When we were reviewing it, we noticed that the house on Lot 3 does not meet setback. We thought it was a minor issue with, you know, on private drives where setback lines can occur, can be kind of tricky, because they don't front to a traditional right-of-way, like on a dedicated road. They indicated that they placed the house in such a way that it was, it fits in with the grade, reduces the area of disturbance, and would fit better on the site. So they are asking for the board to reduce the required setback within a cluster development to 25 feet.
Are there any major staff concerns on granting that? Is there a reason not to?
Staff doesn't have any significant concerns.
Okay, anybody on the board have an issue with it? It's 278. All right, somebody want to move to approve that?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Tidings, second.
Hetsky?
Question? Hetsky, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right.
One last item for the board, 280 Panorama Trail is a held item. It has been on our held items since May of 2019. We have not received any updates since 2019. And speaking with the applicant, the applicant has repeatedly told staff that they are interested in withdrawing the application, but at this point, we have not gotten an official withdrawal or notice of withdrawal from them. In the past, when we have had applications that have sat in our held items for a significant period of time, the board has, in the past, directed staff to send a letter to the applicant to submit revisions or take some form of action on the application. Otherwise, the application would be denied for inaction.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yeah.
Yeah, I think that we should send them a letter, give them some sort of timeframe, 90 days or something, to do something, either withdraw, modify, or we could deny it. What's everybody else feeling?
I'll make the motion.
Be comfortable with the 90-day timeframe or just setting it to, I guess, November 11th? Or December 9th would be our two, you know, prior to our meetings on one of those dates? Or a specific deadline, like a specific time deadline?
We could say the December-
Night.
December meeting.
Works.
It works, yeah.
Tidings, I'll make the motion to send a letter.
I'll second.
Hetsky?
Hetsky, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye. Sorry, Bill.
I'm crushed.
I know.
All right, agenda, right, for next year?
Agenda for next year, yes. It's that time of the year again. So we prepared a draft agenda of our meeting dates for 2022. One item staff wanted to bring up is historically, we have only met once in the months of July and August and did a combined public hearing and work session on the second Tuesday, taking the fourth Thursday, second Thursday, taking the fourth Thursday of the month off. Is the board interested in looking to meet twice during the summer? This past summer, we did have a particularly busy agenda. It doesn't always happen like that. There are some summers we have very quiet and one meeting works very well.
Bill, you go first.
I see no reason to change. I like to one meetings in the July and August timeframe. A lot of people are on vacation. They're going to miss one of the meetings if you have two of them. So if you have one meeting, you know, I like that. I like that one.
Okay. Bob? Go in alphabetical order, Terry.
I think it's fine. Go with what we have.
Go with what we have?
Yeah.
Terry?
I concur, yes.
Concur?
Okay.
Okay. They don't even need my opinion.
Okay.
So we're going to keep it the way it is. All right, anybody have any issues with these dates? I know Jim had mentioned that he probably is not going to be here on the February, the first public hearing meeting in February, and there was one other one.
I think it was May.
May. For me, looking at this, it's probably end of October, the work session. There's a good chance that I won't be here. That all depends on travel restrictions in the world. But otherwise, you guys all good with this?
I'm good with it.
It's pretty straightforward and the way it's always been, so. Somebody want to move to accept it?
I'll move to accept it.
I'll second.
Hetsky?
Hetsky, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, we have our meeting scheduled for the next year. Anything else?
That's all I have for you guys tonight.
Okay. I guess with there being no other business, we will adjourn and reconvene second Thursday of October.
October 14th.
October 14th. Have a great night, everybody, and thanks for watching and coming.